Good evening, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene tonight's Board of Ed meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Serbin.
Here.
Is Wyce.
Here.
Mr. Paz here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Here.
Mrs. Rinkler.
Here.
Mrs. Mall.
Here. Please join me in the flag salute.
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
I have to say it's nice looking out and seeing such a full house. Thank you, everybody, for coming. On February 27th, we had our budgeting meeting where all of the principals and supervisors went over their different budgets, which are going to be approved in our next meeting. I'd like to say thank you to MTS on 2/28. They hosted a game night, a bingo game night. It was really fun. All the kids that were participating had fun, and I love that the idea was prizes over candy. On 2/29, Ridgeway hosted a successful Barnes &amp; Noble night. It was nice to see so many eager and happy children picking out books. March 1st, many of the board members had the opportunity to participate in Read Across America and read at the different schools throughout the district. It was an exciting time for many of us. Our April Board of Ed meeting is being switched to Tuesday, April 30th. The originally scheduled day conflicts with a school boards training that many of us are going to, and we wanted to have a leader in the month so that way we could have the budgeting stuff on that agenda. Tomorrow will be exciting at MTS. There's a one-book activity for those who read the newest Dragon book. This weekend, you can support our drama club as they perform Rock of Ages. And on Saturday, you can get out for some family fun and support Ridgeway Elementary School's Dolphin Day. Tonight's a very special night. I would like to invite everybody to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Ms. Diane Pedrosa. Don't make me do this by myself.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Diane. Happy Birthday to you.
I would like to say Happy Women's History Month to all of our women out here, and Diane is making some women's history in Manchester because on tonight's agenda, we are recommending that Diane become our permanent superintendent. I'm trying not to cry as I read this. On behalf of the Board of Education, I am excited to announce that tonight we will be voting to approve a contract for Diane Pedrosa as our next superintendent. After reviewing many impressive applications for this position and conducting interviews, the Board decided unanimously that Diane is the best candidate for this position in the Manchester district. Diane leads blue and gold. She has been a dedicated member of the Manchester school community for 25 years. She started her career as an educator. She moved on to be vice principal of this very middle school and then principal of Ridgeway Elementary School. Following her role as a principal, she went over to the Board of Education office where she was in charge of curriculum. This November, Diane took on an even bigger role. Not only did she serve as the director of our curriculum during the CUSAC year, but she took on the role of interim superintendent. Diane's servant leadership is commendable. She is respected and fair. She's a team player, and she values all staff and students. She has proven that she works well under pressure, serving our district in multiple capacities since November. The Board of Ed feels that Diane is the best candidate to serve as our chief school administrator, and we thank her for her hard work and dedication to our Manchester community and district. Diane has a lot of support from the community and district, and we are proud to name her our first female superintendent in Manchester. So what I did today is I reached out to a couple people from just various spots in the Manchester district and asked them to share some words about Diane. So I feel that Diane deserves to hear some of the beautiful things that were written about her. Diane is an amazing leader who inspires and powers others to reach their full potential. Her dedication to our Manchester families is unlike any other. She fosters a culture of inclusivity, innovation, and continual growth. Diane's dedication to the district is admirable. She exemplifies our motto, excellence by example. Diane is a dedicated educator, a role model for students and staff, a hands-on administrator, always reaching to make Manchester the best it can be. Diane's leadership has shown us how to lead with our heart. As Diane says, "In the shadow of the leader," meaning we should be the leader that we expect our followers to be, excellent by example. Ms. Diane Pedrosa is dedicated to the Manchester educational community. She's a compassionate and dedicated educational leader that maintains high expectations for teaching and learning, makes decisions that are always child-centered, and fosters a collegial partnership amongst all stakeholders to benefit all of our students. Ms. Diane Pedrosa embodies and leads with our district motto, excellence by example. Manchester is fortunate to have Diane lead the district. She will always lead by example and is a true friend and mentor. Diane is a true leader and inspires all those lives she touches. Mrs. Pedrosa is the personification of our Manchester Township School District motto, excellence by example. Her commitment to the students, staff, and families in the Manchester community is an inspiration to us all. Ms. Pedrosa is truly amazing. She is the heart and soul of Manchester. Her leadership is unwavering, always Manchester first. Sorry. And this is why I didn't email it to everybody, because there's just so many amazing things that I've got. Ms. Pedrosa's inspiring dedication and profound commitment to the Manchester community are truly remarkable. Through her daily guidance, she encourages us to excel as a district and promotes growth as educators. Her unwavering passion for education radiates each day as she leads with the empathy and steadfast dedication to every student's success. She exemplifies excellence by example. William Barclay says, "There are two great days in a person's life, the day they are born and the day they discover why." Ms. Pedrosa has lived her why as a teacher and a leader in a career led by integrity and passion for students and her craft. She is a gift to this community. It has been my privilege to know Diane since she was my daughter's kindergarten principal at Ridgeway nearly 20 years ago. Both of my children absolutely adore her, and I know her as a heart-centered leader who has dedicated her professional life to the students of Manchester. When she stops by my classroom, my high school students are always excited to see her, a clear indication of how many lives she has positively impacted during her many years of service here. She's a consummate professional who holds staff and students to the highest of standards, which she herself models. Diane Pedrosa is the embodiment of leadership by example. Her words inspire, motivate, and raise people up. Her attention to detail is unparalleled. She carefully considers all available information and listens to all stakeholders before making decisions, and always does what is best for students. She makes everyone around her better, which makes our district better. Manchester is fortunate to have her. Diane Pedrosa is one of the most dedicated and hardworking people I have ever met. I have known her for over 20 years, and she is amazing. As she travels around the district, her genuine care for the students and staff shines through. It is evidenced by her positive attitude and smiling demeanor. I've also been on many committees through the years where I have worked with her. She does her research and is extremely knowledgeable, yet is always willing to listen to the opinions of others. Lastly, she bleeds blue and gold. She is committed to the success of our school district and stands up for students and staff. I am so blessed to know her and to benefit from her strong, caring leadership. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Diane Pedrosa for 14 years as superintendent in Manchester. In these years, Diane established herself as an outstanding educational leader, and she grew professionally each and every year. She not only demonstrated leadership in the district, but also gained respect through the county and the state. It is no surprise that I relied heavily on her input and her professional knowledge, but also relied on her as a person. Diane is a unique individual because while she has outstanding professional knowledge, her quality is how she positively interacts with her staff, parents, and students from pre-K to high school. She genuinely cares about people, and it shows. She listens to staff about educational issues and listens to parents and students about their concerns. It is this combination of professional knowledge, the ability to lead, outstanding work ethic, decision-making, and her compassion for people that makes Diane an outstanding leader. In all of my years in education, I have never met a person more deserving and more qualified in all respects to be a superintendent of schools than Diane Pedrosa. The last one, because this made me laugh, and I hope it makes you laugh. I'm going to try to say something that no one else will say, and it could not be more true. Good things come in small packages. She is the best thing that has happened to our district in a long time. Not all of the messages that I got came in on time because I had a meeting before this, but I would like to thank everybody who contributed. I'm sorry if I didn't reach you. I couldn't reach everybody, but thank you, Diane, for stepping up to this position. We are blessed and thankful to have you. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to begin my report with thanking all of you for the coming out and your kindness and everyone showing me such great support. This evening, I'm going to bring to your attention, we have a couple retirements on our agenda. A wonderful, wonderful man, George DiPremio, with us for 41 years while we were retiring. He has done a tremendous job. He will be sorely missed, and so we thank him for his service. George, with his next young lady, when I have the pleasure of serving as the principal of Ridgeway School. To know her is to love her, Gina Foss. You know Mrs. Foss? She is certainly going to be a loss to our children and to our schools, but we wish her all the best. Mrs. Foss has been serving Manchester students for 32 years. Congratulations to Gina. And the high school is going to also have a tremendous loss on their science department. Will Schmidt, awesome teacher, hands-on, did some great trips with the kids, instrumental in the BASF trips for the students, going to see all of the various things going on there. Often Maureen Moore would send me videos from Mr. Schmidt with deer and wonderful things and coyotes going on, and how interesting for our kids. So all the best to Mr. Schmidt. He served for our students for 12 years, so congratulations. I'm going to ask this next young lady to come up. She is a remarkable individual. If you know Mrs. Finlow, she was nominated and was congratulated this past Friday as the NJSCA School Counselor for our county, Ocean County. School counselors are nominated by their colleagues, they're selected by their own school's county counselor association, and the award honors the professionals who devote their careers to serving as advocates and often lifesavers for the nation's students. Shannon Finlow, a school counselor from Manchester Township High School for 15 years, was selected as the 2024 Counselor of Ocean County. Candidates are selected by their peers. They are selected because of their ability to deliver an effective school counseling program. But if you know Shannon, she is just one of a kind. She is truly remarkable. She will help anybody at any time, and we are so fortunate, Shannon, to have you, so if you would please come up. And as we said, we all come in short packages. Excellent by example. We're going to continue with our presentations. Before we go into student recognition, I'd like to bring up the high school guidance department. If we can bring up their presentation. The presenters for this evening is Ms. Shannon Finlow, Ms. Dana Seminelli, Ms. Kristen Kirsten Gannon, and Rachel Kelly. There should be a clicker over there.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shannon Finlow. I'm a school counselor at Manchester Township High School. I wasn't aware of the previous thing, but I'll go ahead and introduce my grades department. We have Kristen Gannon, the freshman counselor, Rachel Kelly, and Dana Seminelli, and myself. We have grades 10 through 12, and we really work together to come up with a cohesive program and to make sure that all students have various opportunities, whether it be to go into a vocational program, go to a two- or four-year school, go into the military. We try to work with each student individually to help them out, and like I said, we work together, so we're always bouncing ideas off of each other to best help our students. We're going to start with, like, student achievements and some stuff that we do, and then we'll talk a little bit about our program.
So we love to showcase our students' achievements, and some of those special ways that we do that are by the honor roll recognition. Any student that gets As or Bs for honor roll and all As for principal honor roll will get put on our academic row. It's like our Hall of Fame in the high school, where each marking period, we take a picture of their honor, and it gets placed on the academic row, and they also get a magnet for their parents to show off. We also do Student of the Month Breakfast, where we invite the parents and guardians to come and join us and listen to all the comments that the teachers have to say about their students. And that's not just being nominated for academic achievement, but also good citizenship, leadership throughout the classrooms. We also do Hawk of the Month, which is one student per month. It's a little bit more specified for going above and beyond what's expected as a citizen, a student, and a friend within the school, and that's nominated by any staff member and it's elected by a committee, so it's a little bit more specialized. We also give departmental awards every year at the end of the year. We recognize students who exceed expectations, they're going above and beyond. That's including all the grades across all content areas, and then they get local, state, and federal awards. And then the last is Scholarship Night. That's specifically for seniors. We share the incentive of presenting them with a monetary reward for any student attending a two- or four-year college or trade school, and that's a monetary reward at the end of the year. So after we celebrate our students and, you know, talk about the great things they do, our big piece of the guidance puzzle is to let's plan, help them plan for the future. So we do many different things for future planning. So like Shannon said, we talk about vocational school, college, trade, military, straight to the workforce. So we have two college and career fairs. We host, our association hosts two college and career fairs every year. We just had one last night. It was a great turnout if you were there. Thank you for coming. We'll have another one in October for, it's the College and Career Expo, so the fall one's pretty heavily attended, so we hope to see you there. We had OCBTS just join us two Mondays ago, maybe two Mondays ago. We did a little career fair in there, showcasing all the programs that OCBTS offers. We work pretty closely with them because we do have the shared time program, and it's super beneficial to our students. If you know any students in the vocational program, it's awesome. We do small group student meetings, you know, one-on-ones. We talk about what their plans are, what their goals are. We try and put the plan in place. We use Naviance. That's one of the tools we'll talk a little bit more about later. We've taken a few field trips. Just took one to Kane University. We have a couple more plans just to showcase all the different opportunities that students do have. We are hosting a direct employment fair in a couple weeks where our seniors who are still undecided can go and, you know, kind of see some other things that are out there that might be right up their alley. We do small group, meaning like we do our junior planning meetings, do the small groups, and just kind of try and help them pave the path for their future. And those are, it's all encompassing, that future planning piece of what we do in the office, so.
So testing, testing is a big piece of what we do. It's not something that everybody loves, but we pass it away. So we do, starting off, right in the beginning of the year, we offered an SAT School Day for our seniors. And for some seniors who prefer a primary taking, because they may have not gone, and they were college bound, and now they decide, hey, I want to go to school. And now, the past few years, tests have been optional for many schools anyway, so it's still kind of one of those things that they don't necessarily have to take, but we do give the opportunity for them to take the SAT. Each year, grade eight, sorry, grade nine, 10, and 11, they do the PSATs. Grade 11 is where the PSATs count for a possible National Merit Scholarship qualifier, and some of our students have been recognized for various awards, and they kind of communicate and have extra opportunities through college board. The ACU Placer is, it used to be the test that was given as a placement test for community college, but now it is one of the tests that can be used towards a state graduation requirement, so we've been using that as well for some of the seniors. Also, if you're, they're taking higher-level math in a college, sometimes college will require a student to test the ACU Placer, the specific math test. The NJGPA, we just finished that, that was our juniors. They had to test one day for math and one day for ELA, and, you know, they did a fabulous job of really concentrating, so we're hoping many of them meant the mark there. The NJSLA is given both in the fall and the spring, and that is for ELA math. For math, it's specific by subject, algebra one, geometry algebra two, and English nine. And then for juniors, they also are mandated to take the science NJSLA, which will be given in April. Finally, if they, we do give for military placement, we do also offer the ASVAB, so if students are thinking they'd like to go into the military, we do set that up. They come in and they give the test to our students who want to go into the military. And finally, portfolios for students who were not successful in meeting a state graduation requirement. There are several different options, but finally, if they really are struggling test-taking, they will complete what's called a portfolio process. Some students only need to do it in math, some need to do it in English, and some need to do both. And so we finish that process, we're all signed and ready to go. So that's an exciting moment for us, but it's a little older than this bingo, but here we have the possibilities.
But wait, there's more. So we're getting ready to ramp up scheduling. Students tomorrow morning are going to be requesting, so anyone who's at our high school or is going to be requesting their courses for next year. Then after spring break, we'll be sitting down, I don't want to kind of jump around, but we'll be, timing is just perfect. We'll sit down with them and just hash out the requests, but in addition to scheduling dual enrollment, we offer close to 30 classes, I believe, dual enrollment-wise, so students can earn the college credit while in high school as well as at OCC. So that's a great option that they have to get some early college credits. And then.
So we, you know, take their scholarship, so, and we do have it all different sizes, so. But we're constantly meeting with the kids, so a couple ones is one-on-one always, tracking their graduation progress and their attendance. And then Apex in credit recovery, that's something that we have in place for students that, you know, are falling behind on credit, they didn't pass a class. It's a way to redeem those credits to certain circumstances, failing in class, maybe it's attendance, things like that. So it's a way that they can recover. And then for summer scheduling, I know always at some point I've done summer scheduling, but that's a time where we can do some hours, be available for parents and families. What we're doing through the master schedule that trades comes with us, so that's, that part of scheduling.
So next week, we have the eighth graders coming in to tour the high school, and we'll be working with them one-on-one to create their schedule. Mrs. Tepo and I already met with the eighth grade student and the Laker students to go over our program of studies and explain to them what courses are available to them. So that's coming next week. And then, there we go. So I work with the freshman students and parents, and we have a freshman orientation that already occurred. I created a brochure with all of our courses and athletics, and we talk about clubs and how important it is to get involved in the high school. And then we also have a freshman seminar class where I go into the classes and work with them for social, emotional learning. I incorporate study skills, organizational skills, conflict resolution skills, and I work with the school social worker and the staff to go in and bring in some guest speakers as well. The health department came in this year already, so I work with the teachers a lot of that. And I also went in and talked about Naviance, and one of the other counselors mentioned Naviance. It is a great tool for our kids, and I noticed that, I'm new to the high school, this is only my second year there, but I noticed that the freshmen didn't really know what Naviance was, and it's a tool that we provide them, and they weren't using it until sophomore, junior year. So I go in and explain what Naviance is, and this year we did a career cluster fight where they could get to know what their interests are a little sooner than sophomore, junior year. And it leads to introduce that program to them, and they can start building their resume and learning a little bit more about that.
All right, so now we're onto sophomore year. So basically, these are some highlights for sophomore year, but we're always meeting with them for us, as far as Shannon, Rachel, and I. The 10th graders are new to us because we have freshman counselors, so it's always the introduction and the one-on-one and academic progress. That's always happening and tracking the attendance, but we now have Team Mental Health First Aid. We just actually got our PD today with the staff. That's some of them, all the sophomores are going to be able to go through and get certified through. There's a committee that's, I think, pretty good, that teachers are our teacher. OCBS, OCBTS does a presentation in the fall, where all the 10th graders, they come in, they present to all of them just so they're aware of what's available for them regarding the trade schools. And then there's a career fair this spring. Mrs. Finlow oversaw them coming in. They came into the media center. All those trades had tables. Every student in the school, it's targeted at sophomores because that's when they're able to go into a trade for 11th and 12th grade, but we did get all the students through that career fair. And then we have a visitation meeting. So any student that did apply for the vocational school, there's an opportunity for those students to then go and actually take a visit to see if it's something that they really definitely want to come to. And then HOBIE is something, the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Foundation, Mrs. Finlow handles all of our scholarships amazingly, but our HOBIE is for a sophomore that exhibits like leadership and, you know, leaders. So that's sophomore year.
And then following year, junior is pretty big because most of our students are thinking about, okay, what am I going to do for graduation? So we try and make sure they're on track, number one, make sure they're on track to graduate. Then we do our small groups, give them the options, how to start looking at colleges if they're going through college route, how to, you know, apply the OCBTS, all the different options. So we did a, we had a big junior planning night recently, just to explain to parents exactly what's to come, financial aid, what's spoken about. We have junior parent conferences, usually around this time as well, where parents can come in and meet with us one-on-one with their child, and then we can, you know, kind of hash out the plan. Lot of planning, if you kind of figured out the theme here. Boys and girls state is for our junior students. We actually, we have two girls who were named delegates just yesterday, two days ago, Jamie Povek. If you guys have any more meetings, I know she comes in, she talks for SGA, and Hira Saji. So those two were named, and they already know, it's not a surprise, so congratulations to them. Boys state, the interviews are next, are after spring break, so that's coming up. And like I said before, we have our fall and spring college and career expos as well. And then what's after junior year?
Senior year. Yeah, we talk a lot about senior year. Really good. We have a wonderful working relationship with our senior English teachers, so we work with them to go into the classroom and basically get the kids ready for their next steps. And again, it's individualized, but the seniors, teachers, the English teachers do incorporate some rating in their curriculum where they will do their college essays, they'll do college resumes, and so we'll go over all of that. We also, by October 1st, know our official rank, and then we give the New Year's Stars Report, which is free, pretty much free OCC tuition, community college tuition for the top 15% of the graduating class. We go over Naviance and how we use it because we do send our transcripts through the secure portal in Naviance, our transcripts and recommendation letters. And then, again, scholarships is huge. We have moved to a Google Classroom for our scholarships now, and so the students can check that. We recommend checking it every few days because we are literally uploading these scholarship applications kind of probably at least three times a week at this point, so there's kinds of scholarships that are available. Departmental awards, they're invited, you know, at the end of the year to get their awards, and then the direct employment career fair, which we talked about. And finally, to celebrate where they're going to be going, Decision Day, we call it Where Your Future at our school, so we invite all of the seniors to wear something to represent what their future's going to look like. So we do that in May, so we do have a senior encourage them to do that, and we'll be having, like, some backdrops and taking pictures and posting that.
All right, so Naviance is the career planning tool, career and college and career planning tool that we use. All the students in the school have an account, they have access to it, so these are some of the features of it, which is the interest profiler and the career cluster, like the freshmen are new in the career cluster. Interest. Like the freshmen are new in the career cluster, interest profiler, we usually do with our sophomores. That's ways to look at, kind of funnel a way of saying what career opportunities we need to be in, what majors in college. Supermatt is a college search within Naviance. It has a way to build a resume, all the college application, it speaks to, I use the word speaks to the Common App, which is anytime they're using the Common App, it goes, go together, and we're able to send the letters of recommendations and their transcripts. So we'll look at that next slide.
OCPTS, we did talk about this before, but we had a wonderful presentation, and we can't say enough about our relationship with OCBS. The instructors there and the kids that came to present their traits, it was just wonderful. And then we tapped a lot for going to chess, they asked to support their foundation, and it was great to see the instructors there. So it's nice to kind of network that way, but I think OCPTS very much for being a part of this.
And then, just so you know, we try to keep an open line of communication. I know all the parents in here are not disposable parents, so we will have your children at some point. So we want to make sure that you know we're trying to communicate with you as through any, through all means possible. So we have newsletters, we blast out text messages, thank you to Mikey and Chris for the text bless. I'm sorry if it's too much, but we want to make sure you are aware. Basically, try to blast out on the social media, the website, we update, you know, I know so, so many different ways. And then different ways parents can get involved, we invite parents to come to our junior planning night, our financial aid, that's part of it. Senior information session at night, OCC comes, but we also speak about financial aid again. And then freshman orientation, parents are invited to that. And then senior prom, the senior prom parent meeting is also something that parents are actually required to go to. So we want to make sure everyone's involved.
So Dana and I. Dana and I. We don't like conflict. So we, we all work together, we give respect and school violence awareness, where we get speakers and do a bunch of different activities throughout the whole school. Dana and I both team, we work as a team for investigations, and hipster is our second year with the reporting system in schools, so less of the paperwork, getting there hopefully, but, but I think it's a, it's a good tool for us to kind of keep track of any, and it's patterns within our school, something that we need to focus on.
Yeah, and we're, they're actually working, Mr. Adams and Mrs. Allen worked on video so that we can have it more available to the community and how that whole reporting goes and what it's about. Because it's something that I think is, we're still educating a lot of the parents and families about, so it's just another resource. Oh, so counseling, oh, that is, so counseling services. So this is basically what we're offering as a school counselor. It's, I mean, this is such a big term, like, it's the theoretical part, solution focused counseling, like, it's free, we're getting them when they need to go. Academic progress, conflict resolution, de-escalation skills, and then there's a lot of collaboration also with our child studies. And then the next one is, so resources and referrals. So we, basically, I, we put this slide in a way of how do we refer within our school first. So Ms. Eckert is our staff, she's a student assistance coordinator, she's great. And then we were able to, Ms. Mulchini is now her second year, she's a mental health specialist. So we have these two great people in our building that we can at least refer to within the building, and I think it's been awesome. And then the next step out of, out of our building is NJ4S Compass. So I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but it's a new, I believe it's grant-funded, but it's a way for us to refer out and at least get students to get mental health services, because there's such big waitlists out of like behavioral or Red Harbor. So they come to the school, we have six active students and a little bit of a waitlist, so we are taking advantage of it, and our students are. Perform care is more mobile response, if you're in crisis, the family can reach out. And then, what you kind of achieve in the center is a relationship that we forge, while we don't want children to sign out, but it's a way at least they can go and get some job readiness, career tools. They study for taking, not the GED, but to get their diploma. And then community agency is just all for our girls in discussions of use of mental health.
Okay, so just to wrap it up, thank you so much for your time. I'm so sorry, we thought it would feel a little bit trigger because we were so nervous. But bottom line, we're here for our kids, we're here for our parents, we're here for everybody. We just love to problem solve. I was a math teacher, so this is right up my alley, so we're problem solving all day. We really do work together really, really well, especially with CST, our admin, like, they really, they have our back. And you guys, thank you so much for your support. And then one more special congratulations to Shannon for.
Thank you, Clay.
I made some, thanks for the freshman.
Great job, Shannon, great job. Fantastic job. So once again, thank you to our guidance department from the high school, you're the best. Algebra information, thank you so much. And that PowerPoint will be placed on the website where anybody needs to access it at a later time. So this evening, we're going to recognize some of our amazing students at each school. Some of them are group, some of them are individual students. But we're going to start calling out the children from MCES, and then we're involved with parts around the world, the postcard project. So if we could have Jax come up, Ariel, Luna, and Nathaniel, give them a nice round of applause. Come on up, Katie. So congratulations to these cuties, they actually are, we're representing the entire state. And we spotlight the heart of the world postcard project. It became, it began simply as sharing postcards from family and places they visited, and has turned into a collection of over one hundred postcards around the world. One hundred, definitely, these young dragons even received postcards from the entire high school in Arizona. Congratulations. And thank you, Miss Marty, a proud graduate of Manchester Township. Our next child is representing Ridgeway Elementary School. Cameron, you want to come up? So this is so interesting. Cameron developed and implemented a math game called Let's Go Look for her classmates. The game focused on division using the big setting, you like that, Mr. Treadway? On our own time, she decorated a lunch bag for each classmate to hold their earned points, provided a deck of cards to use to track points, and even applied a prize to the winner. Guess what happened? Then her classmates decided they wanted to engage and enjoy the game so much, they started creating their own games and scaffolding the points and going from there. We're so impressed with her effort, she even inspired other classmates to develop games and activities for the class. Congratulations. And a wonderful teacher is here too. Well, benefits you're getting from that game, right? And Melissa, congratulations, thank you so much. So Mrs. Swift, this reminds me of when we used to work at the middle school, because we used to help with the recycling club. And I'm nice to see, nice to see it happening at Whitey Elementary School. So these fifth graders, and I'm going to ask up to come up, Scott, Elijah, Declan, and Jake, if you would come up. We also have Phyllis, Amy, Andrew, you, and Yolanda. Thank you to these wonderful students. So these are two graders that represent Mrs. Ryan and Mrs. Rashovich in class. You're asking how come I never remember last name, because Mrs. Rashovich was my student. That's not anything wrong to say. But I will tell you, we are so grateful for what you do there. The lighting elementary school, they get, they got to work making posters, represented what's recyclable and what's not in the classrooms, and inform the staff and students of how our recycling program works. Every Friday before dismissal, three students work together to empty the recycling bins from every classroom in an organized manner. So then our school is going to do the last step of bringing it outside to the recycling container. Tonight, we're recognizing the United Students' Bonds, here are their times collecting recyclable, and are committed to reducing waste at the Whitey School and improving our school's impact on the environment. We're very proud of you, and a special thanks to Mrs. Trias, who helps you have these efforts. So thank you very much, Melissa. Great job, guys, congratulations. Next, we have this cutie cutie representing Regional Days School, and our student of the month, and congratulations to Steven. And Steven is joined by his teacher, Henry, and his mother, Nancy. This mighty preschooler has shown a lot of improvement with PEX. And if you ask what PEX is, it's the Picture of Change Communication System, and his imitation skills. He has recently learned how to imitate clapping, marching, and jumping. He's participating in class, music therapy, and loves to dance, and we are so proud of him. Give him a nice round of applause. Oh, is he going to say?
Yes, yes.
Oh, let's do it again, let's try again. That is fantastic, thank you so much. Great job. We're going to continue with the middle school, and I think I saw Mariana out there. Is Mariana here? Come on up, Mariana. She's been helping out the students in the middle school, she's now in and out of the classroom room. She's a straight A student who has given an excellent work ethic in school and at home. She also is an amazing role model and liaison for the ELL population. She is bilingual and has become a great resource with her teachers and the ELL students in her class. She's able to take this additional responsibility without impeding her own learning or becoming a distraction to others in class. She is a true joy and a pleasure to have in class and in the middle school, so congratulations. And here are our middle school student athletes, and we are extremely proud to have Sam and Christine, who represent our middle school student athletes for the month of March. They are both A-grade leaders of our baseball and basketball and softball and soccer basketball teams, who are just as hard in the classroom as they do in the athletic arena. They are both excellent examples of what it means to be a young student athlete. Thank you guys for being. We're going to continue now with our high school, and this is such a tremendous, you know, feat for us. I think, and then I think this is the home here, the scene, I don't know if she's here. But if not, I just want to recognize the Deja Blue 2023, who was under the advisement of Mr. Cole and the financial advisor, Mr. Schmidt. The Yearbook of Manchester Township High School was selected as a captivating and innovative yearbook, highlighting its creative excellence and journalistic excellence, and it was actually chosen as part of Volume Ten of Possibilities. Representing this evening, we have the students, we actually have co-editors, but they couldn't be here because they are graduates. So Abby and Alexis Sermanak actually were the co-editors. But the students that are here this evening to receive this award is Isabella, Ashley, Audrey, and Michael. Congratulations, and thank you for doing a great job. Excellent job, guys, and thank you so much for working on that. And we'll continue with our athletes of the month from the high school, and I think I saw Faith and Dominic back there. So these are the examples of extraordinary folks, right?
Yeah.
And they are, they bring enthusiasm, everything they do, positivity, and they share experiences with all of us. Faith was a member of our winter challenger league for basketball, where she led the Hawks as a player. She also enjoys horses in her spare time, and you can see her up there riding. Dominic has participated with the Special Olympics basketball programs, but he's being recognized tonight for volunteering to help coach the girls and at times the boys' basketball teams throughout the season. And you can see him up there in action. He's very animated, he takes it very, very seriously, and he does a great job.
Thank you.
So thanks to. So I'm going to just continue a little bit. So obviously, I like to do a quote, this month, you know, it's women's history, and I often read for read across America, the story of Lewis Blackwell. I thought it would be really important for us to let our younger women know that you do not wish to give women a first place, still less a second one, but the complete freedom to take their true place wherever it may be. And if I can be an example, you put your mind to something, you have work ethic, you can do anything that you really put your mind to. So dream, have a plan, and execute it well, and the sky will be the limit for you. I used to tell my students at Ridgeway School, put your best foot forward. You do that, and you can do anything. You need your family, your support, your community, and we're all here for all of you. So I do want to say a couple of things, try to keep this short, Mr. Treadway. But I, I do want to encourage all of you, as Mrs. Mamm said, we have performances of rock of ages this weekend. We also have Dolphin Fest. We also have a wonderful family digital safety and mindfulness workshop, which will be on March twenty seventh, so please mark your calendar. But I would be remiss if I did not express my gratitude to the Manchester Township Board of Education and the entire community for having confidence in choosing me as the Manchester Township School District Superintendent of Schools. My professional career has been dedicated to the students, the staff, and the families of Manchester for over twenty-four years. It has been my pleasure and my privilege to have spent my entire career educating students and supporting the families and staff of Manchester. It is, and it will be taken very seriously, an incredible honor to serve as your superintendent. I started here in the middle school as an English teacher, and I slowly moved up, and I became the vice principal of this wonderful building. And later, I became the acting principal at MTE MS. I was then chosen as the principal of Ridgeway Elementary School in September of two thousand eight, before stepping into the role of director of curriculum in the fall of two thousand fifteen. I bring to the position of superintendent of schools my extensive professional experience, paired with a deep dedication to the students, the families, and the community of Manchester. Manchester pride is woven into who I am, and really, everything that I do. I believe that when it comes to education, it takes a village, and I am grateful that you are all part of my village. Together, we are going to foster excellence by example and keep it in the forefront of everything we do. I, I would be remiss if I did not thank the man who allowed me to really believe in me and do all of this, and there are two men. Dr. Defoe gave me a chance as a teacher, and Mr. Treadway gave me a chance as an administrator. I'll never let you forget it, Mr. Treadway, I was your first admin hire. You know, and I also want you to know soccer is a sport. Listen, I, I have to thank all of you. My team has been exceptional, my husband, my secretary, my, my tech team, just thank you to all of you. The board has been really, truly exceptional. Craig has been my right hand, the administrative team, I just can't thank you enough. I hope I don't forget anybody. My dad passed away a couple of years ago, and you always say. My dad passed away a couple of years ago, and he always said, you know, dedication and hard work ethic will pay off. And I am the example of that. You put your mind to something, you work hard, you can make it happen. We won't make mistakes, trust me. But reflection and really thinking about, you know, the way you can do things and improve it, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have challenges, but I also know that I have a really supportive team, and I can't know any for everything. Mr. Treadaway used to always say to us, "It's important you build your team." I don't need 10 diamond jodroses. I need several people that have expertise in different areas, and I rely on them. And that is confidence, and that is also the willingness to know. This is a big job. It cannot be done alone. So I thank all of you for your love, your support, your encouragement, and I want you to know I take this very, very seriously. I will do everything I can for your children, for our staff, for our community. So thank you so much. Congratulations again. At this time, we'd like to take the report from our Military Ambassador.
Hello. Glad you could follow that up. You're good. Normally, I'm very short-winded, but today I actually have some announcements. Just a couple of things that are coming up with the base and as it relates to the school community. March 26th, so next Tuesday, we have our Monthly Military Child Proclamation on the base at 10. It's an opportunity to remember children's roles in strengthening the military family. The Department of Defense recognizes military children because of their service commitment and sacrifice in supporting the missions that we do as service members. I believe we're sending some students out, a bus.
We are.
We are, yeah.
We're working with Commander Holzer on that, and we have children coming to all the functions, but that in particular.
Awesome, awesome. And then the next big one, before next, I guess, next month's meeting, is the 305th Student Engagement and Career Day. It's kinda like a miniature airshow without the, like, sad displays and stuff. Yeah, I believe we're also sending folks out to that. And then the Bring Your Child to Work Day. So the military folks will be bringing, some of us will be bringing our children to work, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. At this point in time, we'd like to hear from Jay Jones, our Student Government Representative.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Jones, and I'm the Executive Student Government Representative. And I'm here to inform the board with required information about the activities and events that have been planned at high school since the last meeting. And here are some of the events that we have been working on. For the executive board, we have the Someone Special Dance, which is Sunday, June 2nd. This is a day of fun where younger students can participate in dancing, face painting, and more with their Someone Special run-up. For the senior class, we have Senior Gifts. We're trying to think of senior gift ideas for graduation, and we have E-Prom, which is May 17th at the Mainlands. We are in a good spot with money, but we are also trying to think of more fundraising ideas. We're trying to think of possibly a student versus staff basketball game. For the junior class, their prom day is May 31st. They are still working on the details, but their day is set in stone. For the sophomore class, they're working on a food fundraiser. Not exactly sure what it is yet, but they are working on it, and they are doing a formal tournament in the spring. For the freshman class, they are also getting active, and they are planning to do a softball tournament, and they are trying to plan a movie night, but that is still in the works. I would like to thank you for allowing me to represent the student government and everything.
Thank you. Craig, can we have your report, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest, I wish they'd let me go first, because nothing brings the mood down like the report. But, all right, so first, I'll get through the longer one first. So we have our tentative budget on the agenda tonight for approval. Just to give you a little information about where we're at at the moment, the budget that was submitted was originally $6 million higher than our current budget this year. The majority of this was contributed by nine items in our budget. Salaries and health benefits, out-of-district tuition, charter school tuition, liability insurance, technology needs, aid and loom, contracted services for transportation, and contracted services for special education. So these nine items represented about 92% of that $6 million. The good news, the district did receive $614,000 in additional state aid this year. This was, this is the last year of Senate Bill S2. So we were slated to lose some money, but with our changes in enrollment that we have here, we did receive an additional $614,000 in state aid. I am asking the board to take two spending growth limitation adjustments in our budget. They are approximately $825,000. These are permitted tax levy adjustments. They are for health, health benefits and for enrollment. We actually do have, we actually had a fairly large enrollment increase since last year, so we are qualifying for an adjustment. We are adding some new revenue to the budget this year, revenue that we've never recorded before. The first one is non-public transportation. Our non-public transportation has been so small in past years, we've never really had a need to budget it, but because it is much more significant now in our budget, we are budgeting the revenue. We are budgeting additional interest income. If you've looked at your bank statements lately, interest, everybody's making a little more money out of their money. So the same is happening here, so we are gonna include that in the budget. Our tuition income from Lakehurst is staying relatively the same. We don't see a big change there. Radicals in the town actually decreased this year, which is kind of uncommon. The reason for that is the township had some tax appeals and some assessment adjustments, so radicals did go down a little bit, but the town is expected to go through a reassessment in 2025. The average home value in Manchester did not change a heckle a lot. It went from $201,400 last year to $202,000. Some of the biggest cost drivers in the budget this year, you know, unfortunately, this is kind of like a broken record, but it's the same thing over here. Health insurance costs are expected to increase 12 to 14%. Our transportation costs are still higher than normal. Although we do have more bus drivers this year than we had last year, we are still short bus drivers. So we are contracting out more routes. As I stated earlier, our aid and loom, which are payments that we make to families that send their children to private schools within a 20-mile radius of the district. If we cannot provide them transportation, we do have to pay them. This year, it was $1,165, I believe, per student. Now, the district is responsible for $710 of that. The rest of it is received through aid. But that number has gone from $34,000 in 2021, and we're projecting $700,000 next year. So that's a fairly significant increase in our budget. The other one, the other one that we are dealing with now that is new to Manchester is charter school tuition. Two years ago, we had, we had no students in charter schools. We currently have 25 students in charter schools at approximately $21,000 per student. So that's an estimated $580,000 that we have in our budget next year for charter school tuition. Liability insurance, estimated to go up 30 to 50%. Majority of that is in workers' comp. The reason being is that the way workers' comp works is they take a three-year snapshot. So we are coming off some COVID years where we had much, much, much fewer claims. Now that we are essentially back in full swing, we have many more claims. So our experience rating is worse, so our premiums are going up. Special education is another one. Special education here has been on the rise just since January of 20, this January. We've added eight, eight new students out of district, which is unheard of. I don't think it's happened here since I've been this administrative year. We are seeing more and more students coming in with severe needs and needing full-time nurses, one-to-ones. So this has played a huge impact on our budget. Minimum wage is going up one more time in January, so that will have an impact on subrates and services that we get from our vendors. We still have a shortage of substitutes across the board at all levels. So we are doing, you know, we are paying for more overtime, more class coverage, and those types of things. We have also, our ESL population has increased tremendously in the last year and a half. So again, so we are required, we're requiring to bring in more staff, more programs, more things for that, for those students. And the last one, which is a big one, is over the last three years, we've had federal funding, essentially COVID money through various different federal grants. I mean, it was millions of dollars. So over those years, we've allocated things that we used to pay in our local budget out to the federal grants so that we could save programs and staff in our budget. Now that that funding is gone, we gotta start bringing some of that stuff back into the local budget. So we are in the process of making decisions on those things, but that's having an impact on this budget. So how do we get to cap? So if you heard earlier, we had, we had cut a little over $3 million out of our budget this year. And that's a fairly significant number. And, you know, unfortunately, when you have a number like that, you can't, you can't do it without reducing staff. So this budget, as it stands right now, is estimated to have a reduction in staff of about 18 staff members. I can't talk specifically about it yet, because I do believe we can reduce this number before the public hearing. Our public hearing is in five weeks. So between now and our public hearing, we do have time to make budget adjustments, and I am confident we can get this number down. The goal is, you know, to reduce staff der�trition so that we do not have to have riffs or layoffs. I can't promise that yet, but we are working on that. One of the things we were able to do is we were able to reduce our out-of-district tuition by about $500,000 through working with our child study team. We are, we'll be able to bring four students back into district next year that are out of district this year, which represents about a $500,000 cost. We moved about $430,000 of technology equipment needs in, out to one of our federal grants. We have to spend the money by September of this year, so we are gonna move that money into the grant so that it does not hit us in the local budget. We'll be looking at reducing, reducing some of our lunch aids, lunch aid or hours. We've moved as much stuff as we can into leases and things like that. Like, you know, the old days, you could buy a textbook, you had a textbook for 10 years, and then you bought, you bought a textbook 10 years later. Now, it's not like that anymore. Now you're paying for licenses, it's once a year. These are, they are fairly significant costs. So what we try to do is we try to group those costs together, put them in a lease purchase, and then spread that cost over a couple of years. So we did that everywhere we could. We eliminated just about every equipment purchase that was requested. And then the rest just came from straight-line budget cuts. Essentially going through, looking at, looking at the budget, looking at our spend over the years, and just essentially doing an analytical review of the budget and making reductions to get to cap. So what's next? Like I said, tonight, we are approving a tentative budget to be submitted to the county office. That is required by statute. But we can make changes between now and the public hearing, which will be in about five weeks. We're gonna continue to work through the budget to find relief. We are reviewing everything that we're doing in the district, programs, after-school, transportation, athletics, clubs. Looking at all these areas and try to find anywhere in the budget that we can reduce spending to save staff, because that's our goal. Our goal is to save as much staff as possible and maintain our programs and extracurricular activities. So I wish I had better news this year, but, you know, we've, we've been able to sustain our staff and programs all through the years of S2. You may have heard this out there, you know, everybody's talking about a fiscal cliff, and we're at it. And, you know, this year and the coming years, we're gonna have some challenges to face, and we're gonna have some decisions to make. But like I said, our goal will be to save as many programs and staff as we can between now and the public presentation at the end of April. All right, I've got a couple more, these are just agenda items, just so you guys are aware. Let me just get there. Couple items on the, see, the top of the item is here, isn't it? Couple things, we have the, we have the Lakehurst that received a tuition agreement on the agenda. That is part of our budget. If some of you don't know, Lakehurst does send us their high school students. So every year, we have, we come up with an agreement, a tuition agreement for those kids. It's on the agenda. There's a, there's a credit change order on the agenda. Our Ridgway Window Project is complete. The project came in on the budget, so this is gonna put money back in our grant. The Township Recreation Department is requesting buses for the summer. This is something they do every year. They're requesting six buses. We have limited the amount of drivers that they can poach from us in the summer, because we do have, we do have some challenges finding drivers for our summer programs. They are responsible for all the costs of the buses, insurance, repairs, gas, all that stuff. In the summer, we just allow them to use them. There is also a resolution on the agenda. I have to have the board approve it first before I can request it. I am requesting from the county office that we are able to allocate unbudgeted or under-budgeted revenue into the 23, 24 budget so that we can pay for some of the unanticipated costs in, and again, similar costs, special education services, aid and loom, and charter school tuition. For example, our charter school tuition, when we received a report from the state, they told us to budget $166,000. It looks like our tuition's gonna be about $450,000 this year. So what I'm gonna need to do is I'm gonna need to allocate revenue into the budget that we didn't originally allocate, so that I can put that money into the budget to cover those expenses. So I need the board to approve that first, and then I gotta put that, submit that request to the county. And from what I've heard, they will approve that for us, but I need the board to do that first. And the last thing is, we are in our fifth year with Pomptonian Food Service. That means we are required to go out for proposals. So that will be advertised on Friday, with the goal being to board approve whoever, whoever the food service company's gonna be from April at the latest mail. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. At this point, I would like to see if there's any members from the community that would like to speak on agenda items only. Do we have any board member reports?
I was, I was one of the, one of the participants in Read Across America, which is always an extreme pleasure for me as a former school librarian. I really enjoy being with the kids and encouraging them to read. And I want to thank the high school choirs. They came to Leisure Village West to perform, and they were fantastic. So thank you very much.
Are there any other board member reports?
I have one thing, too. I participate in Read Across America. It's a great time with all the kids. Also, the Penguin Pludges is coming up. The reason of that is someone before to run into water freezing. Fun every year for a great cause. And, you know, congratulations to Diane again.
Anyone else? Is there any old business or correspondence?
Uh, there's no business, no correspondence.
Okay. Please go to Section 1. A, Superintendent. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Discussion? Congratulations again, Diane. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
I have to abstain, so I'm gonna abstain.
His wife is a district teacher, that's why he has to abstain.
Ms. Acton.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Malm.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Letter B, new business, numbers 1 through 4. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Acton.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Malm.
Yes.
Letter C, letter C through E. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Acton.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Malm.
Yes. Letter F, budget items for 2024, 2025, numbers 1 through 4. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Discussion? Got that? Got that?
Yep.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes.
Letters G through J, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes.
Section 2, Administrative, numbers 1 through 5, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Can you just explain a little more about the preschool expansion sidebar?
Yeah, so, so one of the things we do every year, since this program is new to the district, is we meet once a year with the association and just discuss the program, the things that are going on, some changes. So that's all this is, it's essentially just reapproving the sidebar for another year. No major changes this year, you know, but we had a very good discussion, Lori and I, and Dan and his team, just talking about things that are going on, things, you know, that are working, things that might need some adjustments, so that's what the sidebar's doing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes.
Roll call, sorry, I'm sorry. Personnel, numbers 1 through 37, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to congratulate everybody who's retiring, thank you for your service to Manchester School District. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes to everything, no to six.
Did you say no to six?
Yeah.
And then Mrs. Mount.
Yes.
Student personnel, numbers 1 and 2, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wengler.
Yes.
Mrs. Mount.
Yes.
Special services, number 1 and 2, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? I have a question on number 2, the termination, is that student coming back in district?
This, this, that terminates, that student that attends commission in the line for part time, so it's, the student's already here, but he goes there. So, yeah, we're just terminating the placement at Catsimat.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sermanek.
Yes.
Ms. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Pos.
Yes.
Mr. Kellerer.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.